All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 5th, 2012 City Council meeting of the City of Nelson. It's kind of like the whole meeting in order. The second item on the agenda is the vote of City Council members. The list includes Martha Tipton, Jonathan Bishop, and Wayne Chronic. Being a gentleman, I prefer to swear Martha Tipton in his name if you'd allow it. And since I don't do this well, I'll give you a sheet to read from. Now, do we need anything other than... In hand?
Martha Tipton, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city and that I will support and defend the charters thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, next person, B before C? That's good. Do I get a cheat sheet too? Well, okay.
You're supposed to remember what I say. I can't even remember what I said.
I, Jonathan Bishop, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of the city, that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Sign it. All right, Mr. Chronic?
I, Wayne Chronic, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of City Council member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America.
Congratulations. All right, thank you all very much. At this point, we would like to do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The fourth item on this list is the executive session. We moved it to the beginning of the list because we have new members and we need to basically go over a few personnel issues and cover any pending litigation issues that might have come up. And the other opportunity is to discuss purchases of real estate. But for this, it'll be primarily personnel and pending litigations. All right? For that, I'd like to have a motion. I'd like to offer the only motion I could ever offer, which is to go to executive session. Can I get a second? A second. All in favor? Record shows unanimous, and for the record, Larry Sellers is not present today. We're waiting. As stated, we just went over personnel and any pending litigation issues that we had, and appreciate your patience for this. The next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor pro temp. Mayor pro temp fills in for the mayor anytime the mayor is unavailable. He can conduct city business, and he can sign documents in place of the mayor. Now she speaks.
Or she.
All right. Now, with that embarrassment over, I think at this point I'd like to open the floor up for discussion of possible mayor pro temp candidate.
I would like to nominate Martha myself, because she's more like a senior.
Did her comments sway you?
Yeah, she actually, you paid me off.
Consider what we made. That's not hard.
I think she needs to be offered, to my opinion, the job first, because she would be a senior. Because we're all new, we gotta learn anything. We gotta get spayed before we do anything.
The other voices?
Just for fun, I'll throw me in.
Okay? All right. Now, get in there.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry?
So what?
So now you have to throw a name in the box. Martha. And Martha, who you vote for? You or Jonathan?
She.
She? Well, in this first meeting consisting of four City Council members, so far we have avoided making the mayor the final vote, and I'd like to applaud the City Council for that. So with that decision, we need a motion to...
I'm gonna make the motion, make Martha mayor pro temp.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Record shows unanimous.
Good score.
All right. Do the odds.
Now, if anybody calls me, I'm gonna have to call you.
All right, well, I think I lost my ten. One second.
Great. There's no one.
All right. All right. Congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from December 5th and December 8th. See, that's in our packet. Just review that briefly, and when you're done, let me know. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as a review. Second, from anyone?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, record shows unanimous. Thank you. At this point, we have reports from committees and departments. The first committee, which is a commission, is the Planning and Zoning Commission. You are a Calhoun student.
I'm Mark Calhoun, Chairman of the Planning Commission. I'll give you a brief report tonight, and you'll have opportunities, take visual, to get a lot more information, just depending on how interested you might be in such periods. During the past year, Planning Commission's been involved in several projects. Examples are, we did an annexation study involved in the extension of the park project. Involved in several grant applications. We did one zoning district change, and also were involved in bearing a contract for lock clearing, which the city now has in place. And most recently, the Planning Commission was given the assignment to assist and coordinate the removal of dilapidated properties within the city. And we identified approximately 10 such buildings that we feel qualifies to be dilapidated buildings. And I understand from our attorney that four of these will be on the agenda for the court session this coming Monday, where the owners have the opportunity to defend the condition These 10 properties were identified, and complaints were made through channels, which have to do either through one of the council members, or if a group of five citizens cared to make those complaints, they could. We routed them through council members. And those are currently in the pipeline. Like I say, four are coming up from court, and there are others that are still in progress in pipeline, but identifying owners, notifications, this is not a speedy process. And once we had the assignment to be involved in dilapidated properties, and started inventorying lots in the city that came apparent, there were a lot of other issues than just dilapidated property, a lot of code violations. And then it evolved into conditions of city-owned properties, buildings, streets, street signs, sidewalks, a lot of areas that were identified as needing attention. And those were handled in conjunction with two other council members that are no longer in the council, the councilperson over street and roads, and one over public safety area. So we'll be looking to continue that if the council so desires that we stay involved in coordination and more or less the expedition of these issues, violations, and just properties that need attention, both city and individuals. And on the downside, my personal observation is that the progress has been slow in these endeavors, and we're gonna need a lot of serious attention by the council members, particularly those who have these two areas, streets and roads and public safety, in order to get these projects to go forward with some kind of a little more speed to it. And we'll be available to work with those people, with those assignments, and I'll be interested in hearing from those that are in those areas so that we can kind of fill you in on what we've done in the past, and get your ideas of where we need to go in the future. And the last item, again, wanted to mention that we're one person short of the Planning Commission, have been for over two years now, and I introduce Paula Campbell as a good candidate for the position, and I'd like for you to give your consideration to make that one. That's all I have. Any questions?
I have a point to raise. As far as the individuals who would be over the areas of responsibility that you mentioned, I think that it would be best for the City Council as a whole if you were to share that information, not just with the two individuals, but with the entire council, as to what you've been doing as part of this project. And you can do it through email, or you can just bring in a report of it so that it can be circulated on the council, just so that we, everyone's on board, because this is not just a topic that affects those two areas, it affects the city, and I believe that...
If I could make a counter proposal?
You can.
From our involvement and observation of getting things done, this needs to be a very strong involvement of the councilperson over these areas, and I would look to that person to keep the council informed, thus as just advisors. See what I'm saying?
I appreciate your perspective. Thank you. The next department is the Police Department. Keith, you have anything for us?
I'll be brief. Well, I hope everybody had a good holiday, holidays. Been sick most of mine, but now I'm back to business, new year, starting over on the right foot. In December, December was kind of quiet for us. We just had three reports, two theft reports, and a criminal damage to property report, which most everybody knows the damage to property was at the post office. And if anybody has any information that can help me on that, I'm here. So if y'all hear anything, no matter how silly it seems, please come out and let me know anonymously, or however you want to do it. And as far as the theft reports go, the theft couldn't have been possibly prevented, and I just want to stress to everybody that if you got something valuable in your car, lock your car up, or if you can't lock your car, just take it out, and don't give people the temptation to damage your vehicle to get that prized possession out. So I know it's still Nelson, still a small town, but we still have some people that pass through looking for mischief, and if we could just send them on out, not give them the opportunities, that'd be great. As far as 2011 goes, we had 201 citations for the year. 104 of those were warrants, which were mostly ordinance violations. 97 of those citations were actual fines that they had to be paid, which is mostly moving violations and some ordinance violations. 17 total reports and seven arrests. And that's about all I got. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one, and it's a request, more than a question. I know previously we had sessions where they'd broken down your areas of responsibility and your tasks that were given you. Would it be possible for you to give the new City Council, not now, but in an email, just send it out, appraising every one of what your duties are, what percentages you're spending on those, so that we can have a better understanding of the variety of tasks that you're doing, because you do quite a bit.
Okay, sure. I'll take care of that.
I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, well, that's great. Now, there's a spot on here for a Personnel Committee, and for all of you that may or may not realize it, the changing of the employee handbook requires that a Personnel Committee be established as a first line for managing the employees of the city, at which time the Personnel Committee would make decisions based on performance, things like that. And their decisions would be the initial action with employees. Should an action be taken with an employee, that employee would then have the option of appealing to the entire City Council. The Personnel Committee took the place of the mayor's responsibility over employees, if that makes it simpler. So because of that, we, the city now requires a Personnel Committee, and by definition, a committee consists of more than one person. So we can't have a Personnel Committee report because we haven't established one yet. That's something that the new City Council is going to have to establish. Jeff, correct?
Yes.
Yes?
The handbook required that you, the City Council voted to approve the handbook.
And they did.
And you, under the ordinance, are allowed to appoint committees with concurrence of the council.
Right, okay.
Which may include council members, non-council members, et cetera.
What Jeff has just done is he put the responsibility back on me instead of the council, and I wasn't expecting that. So I'll take responsibility, and I'll get with the City Council, and I'll work on that. But anyway, that's, and I apologize for being, you know, too talkative tonight, but I'm doing it for the benefit of not just all of you, but the City Council members too, so we can try to get on the same page with each other and get things moving. So that's my rant about the Personnel Committee. The next is the Executive Report, which would be me, and for me, I just want to say that I'm very pleased with the City Council and the attitude that they have, and I'm comfortable that we're gonna all be working together to do things for Nelson, and that we're not going to be distracted by too many other things. So for me, even though hope is not a plan, it is a viable alternative to other things. So I'm very hopeful that we're gonna be moving in the right direction together, so that's the end of my report. The next item is the Agenda Approval, the current Agenda Approval. Once you've had time to review it, I would accept a motion to accept it.
Can I request that we add checks on ours?
Yes. Yes. The city's going to need two council members, one of which could be available at any time to sign checks for the city. At this current time, it is Larry Sellers and Martha Tipton. If we can add this in...
Instead of checks on ours, it might move to be bank accounts?
Pardon?
Anything on the bank accounts, all of those accounts?
How about official city signatories?
Yeah, at the bank.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds great.
All right. Can we get a vote on adding that to the agenda before we approve it?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to add to the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? So item F on our new business is city signatories. I have to show this spelling right? So...
Can I back up just a minute? I have a question. Can we back up to the Personnel Committee? I just want clarification.
Sure.
You're saying that the committee would be formed by the citizens? It would be made up of citizens?
No, not on the personnel.
Okay.
I misspoke. I just don't have it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not an option.
Okay.
Since you asked that, can I ask that whoever's appointed to this position as the head of whatever would not, would have, if anybody else has pointed to, say, planning and zoning, you know, it would go through them, so we'd have a committee with two people there to start with.
Well, just to qualify, and again, I apologize for dragging this out too far. My vision is whoever has the area of responsibility, and that area has a committee, that individual should be the chairman of the committee.
Right.
Because that's their area of responsibility. Any additional people on that committee would be members of the committee. So if there is one councilman who is the chairman, and one other councilperson, I have to see how to do person, and one other councilperson is added, that is a committee of two, but all committees have the mayor as the ex-official member. Now, I don't have a tie-breaking vote as an ex-official member, so if you have a deadlock, one-to-one vote on a two-person committee, you can't make a decision.
And most, I guess, most decisions, the committee's probably limited in decision-making anyway, so it'd have to come before the mayor or council.
But in the Personnel Committee, it's crucial that they be able to come to a conclusion on their own. They can't send it back to the committee, to the council. You know, their function is to oversee employee responsibilities. So they can't be split on whether or not to do it, then come here to the City Council, because the City Council is where the employee comes to appeal what they do. Sorry. But, you know, that's why you would need a three-person Personnel Committee.
Okay.
All right?
A little clarification.
So can we add, can we vote on the agenda now?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
I'm talking.
All right. Not a motion?
My motion, maybe?
For the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Second? All in favor? Record shows unanimous. And bringing along old business, item number A is the Ethics Committee Candidates. I regret to inform the public that no candidates from the City Council have been submitted other than one previously by the absent councilmember Larry Sellers. I sent an email out asking that the City Council provide a name or list of names, and they haven't had the opportunity yet. I didn't send that email myself until last week, so they, at this point, haven't had the opportunity to address that. I urge the City Council to get those names, because it affects a few things with the city. First, we're a city of ethics with the GMA, and the guidelines that were passed by the prior City Council requires that we have an Ethics Committee established. Whether it's used or not, it has to be established. We have to have people's names on the list. And just to go over it real quickly, the guidelines changed. The City Council supplies one name as their pick, the mayor supplies another name as his pick, and according to the documentation, the mayor then submits names to the City Council for the third individual. I would prefer if the City Council and the mayor would throw names in the pot, and the City Council looked those names over and submit who they might want me to select, so that we can cut down on any further delay. And that's just, and there's nothing forbidding that, but it, you know, it's my effort to work along with you and make it happen. And also, there are state guidelines, Jeff, regarding Ethics Committees, state code.
Also finding somebody that's willing to do it. I done asked several people.
Well, and yeah, I'm not...
I'm not, I like my duty. I've been trying.
Community involvement is very important. I mean, it's critical, especially on this. So again, not criticizing, just making the observation. We have to get off the pot on this.
So we're looking for at least three.
We have, we can only have three.
Okay.
They changed it from a five-person to a three. So, all right. So having made that explanation, I'd like to entertain a motion from somebody to table this until the next meeting. this until the next meeting, or if it's urgent enough, then we could have a special call meeting, but at this point, table.
I'd like a motion to table it.
A second of the motion.
All in favor? Record show unanimous. All right. The next old business, item B is the Old Marble Office Building Roof Bids and Estimates. As many of you know, the old Georgia Marble Office Buildings up the hill here are owned by the city. The first building, the large building, has some structural issues. At the last meeting, it was discussed of having the roof repaired and then finding out that the building was worth saving, worth renovating. I'm of the opinion, and it's up to the City Council what you do, I'm of the opinion we should entertain bids on repairing the entire building to see if it's worth sinking $2,000 in to fix a hole in the roof. We don't want to throw two, in my opinion, don't throw $2,000 at the roof and find out the building's no good. That's just my perspective. So if City Council members would like to talk about this?
Yeah, I've, I've been at construction work for years, and I've looked at the building. Just repairing the roof ain't gonna get it. I know the floor is pretty rotten on one section, but it's in a crawl space. We could remove that section or get in there and see what shape the floor is, to see if it's worth saving that section.
And not, no offense and not to cut you off, we don't want to provide potential bidders with, you know, too much biased information. So I think if we don't discuss what we think is actually wrong with it and just let individuals come in and inspect and bid on it, would be better off.
But you're saying, you're saying also to redo the whole building. I'm, I'm wondering, should the council redo the whole building or just a portion of it for right now and maybe, maybe use in-house labor or something other than do it?
I, I agree with your perspective. But in keeping with, keeping the bid information, you know, to the people doing the bidding, I think that if we receive the bids in on what work needs to be done, we can determine what we want based on the overview of everything. We can say, well, right now, we can afford this, and we can do this and put it off to later.
As long as it do it right now.
Right. And I think that's the way bids would come in. But that, again, I'm just offering my opinion, which may or may not be worth much, but there are other opinions and.
Well, we're not obligated to bid any which way like that.
No. We don't have to take the bids.
More like, unless the estimate or whatever.
So what's our, look, if we do fix the building, what's the plan for it? Do we have a plan for the building? Well, or is it just kind of, it's, I was asking.
No, 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 I like that answer because I'm willing to talk.
Yeah.
That building is historical. I mean, it's, it is part of what made Nelson Nelson. It's huge. If it could be renovated, I mean, the possibilities of, I don't know, renovating it and converting it back to the way it looked originally, it would be a historic building, and we could put it on the registry. Right now, there are very few historical sites in Bickens County, and based on what we're able to do, it could become one of those. But that's a, that's the long shot. But the short of it is, the rooms up there could give us a larger City Council room, could have a separate room for the courts, there's enough room to house all of the city plus some. So, and the buildings, when they were purchased, they were purchased at a fairly reasonable price for the times, and, you know, had something been done at that point, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have sat there and been vandalized. Right now, they've had some vandalization.
Will, will the bids come in separate, to where we can see the separation of the two buildings?
Well.
Or will they all come in as one number?
I think that we can ask for that.
I don't know if we need two bids or.
Yeah, we can ask for it to be done in that manner.
I do have a question.
Please.
When, before, like, the roof bids, it kind of was like, oh, fix this. When we're submitting bids or estimates on that, we kind of need to know, and they need to know, what we are wanting them to fix. Not just say, hey, go look at this building and tell us what's wrong with it. We might need to hire an inspector to do that, or see if our inspector could do that. Because that's when you get into one person bidding to redo the whole thing and one person re, just bidding to fix the wall in.
Well, I, in keeping with the agenda item, if, if we still pose it as repairing the roof, but ask for, you know, segmented bids on the property also, I think bidders realizing that, you know, we may fix the roof now, you know, but based on our bid, we could get the entire bid. I mean, if they could come in as a general contractor, say, we can do the roof for this, and we can do the other areas of need in, in this matter. So I think that's a possibility if we word the bid request that way.
Because the first time we sent the roof bid out, nobody did.
Right.
What if somebody knew on Tuesday?
So are we looking just to repair or just to fix the, you know, repair the floor and the ceiling, or are we looking to actually build the, bring the whole building back up to code and make sure it's, you know, what, what's our level of bid we're looking at? Or if the bids absorb it at a cost to repair that building, where are we, are we going to leave the building standing as is, or are we going to look at removing the building?
I fall back on the project that was given to planning and zoning. That is, find dilapidated buildings that need to be demolished. And I say, without hesitation, let's take care of our house first before we go to somebody else. And I see that as a sore spot for the city, and we need to, you know, do everything within reason to recover that. Because as I said, first and foremost, that's history. You just don't bulldoze it. And, and our, I, I think that should be our long-term plan is to keep it. But, you know, I.
I was just asking if it's beyond, I don't think it's beyond repair, but if it comes back to be excessively expensive to fix that building or bring it to code, then we need to at least be able to have an idea of what that may cost too.
We have both buildings big, we, we could rent, probably rent one out at least, use it for something. It's been sitting there all this time and using it for nothing, so.
Yeah. And I recommend highly, and I appreciate your restating that, that every council member visit that building for themselves. Before you can make an educated vote, you need to be educated on it. So take a look at it, and don't depend on other people's observations like mine, no offense or jackass.
Oh, yeah.
You know, go up there and look at it, and then, you know, we can, if we're putting, if we're going to stay with the agenda and put out bids, then a motion has to be made to put bids out specifying the roof, but also asking for other estimates in the building. And that way, we can look at them if they come in, even though none did come in. But possibly by restating it, it might give remodeling companies or repair companies more interest in possibly getting more work, and we can, at that point, decide how we're going to come up with funding for it.
Well, you know, at least ever, we, we voted to take bids on it, but we didn't get into specifications for it. If I'm willing to jump in or something, I'd say right now, whatever Randy needs to be able to come up with.
So we need to be able to, what I would need, what we would need is a motion to expand the bid specifications to include other repairs as required to the building after the roof is repaired. Because we don't want to repair the roof if we can't, you know, keep the building. And I think any, you know, any bidder will understand that concept.
So why can't we just get estimates to bring the building back up to code? We're gonna have to get specific things to do because one person might say, hey, the window is fine, the heat's fine, when in reality, the next person says it's not. So we need to be able to tell them what.
That's true.
I, I want to get the question.
Yeah, and I appreciate your input.
It's almost like the moan, this way, have some of them that turned in things that the others didn't turn in.
Yeah, because they had the protocol of what they had to fix, and some of them added more stuff.
Well, do, can we send out separate bids to fix the roof? When people come in and bid on fixing the roof and stabilizing?
Yeah.
And then send out another, another thing, where we want people coming in here bidding on bringing it up to code? And let's pull all those numbers together and look at them and have them sitting there where we can look at them. But do it, can we do it as two separate, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Two separate?
But if, just, I think Jackie said, why fix the roof if we're gonna have to demolish all of them?
Right, right.
So that's what I said, if we just get one bid or you want them separate, because it's gonna have roof repair on there.
Well, there's one whole set. We don't have to fix all of it. We might fix it all or tire it all, and now there is a couple spots that have got to be fixed too, so.
It's just gonna have to be an itemized estimate.
Yeah. They'll just have to break it down, what they, you know, what we're telling, what rooting for.
We want to have a, basically repair the roof as the first item, and then itemized up to code for the rest of the building.
And probably go a step further than after we get, at least get that down where we can save the building, because it's not sealed up right now, and that's, that's really just been vandalized and, and everything else too, so.
Didn't we have a building inspector on retainer?
Our building inspector is on the retainer. He says that he went there and gave me a list. I do not have the list, I do not know.
Do we need a new building inspector then?
That's something I've asked for for a year now.
Well. I think that because we've already approved the agenda, is there any wiggle room for amending the, to include the placement of bids for the, the placement of bids for estimates on remodeling or recovery, restoring this building? And a, a associated bid to entertain the option of retaining a new building inspector for the city? Can that happen?
Yes, I think if you're talking about repairing a building, I think that's a come under which you've already done, and if you're gonna add, putting out bids for the possibility of a new building inspector, probably should amend the agenda to add that item as a new business.
Is, are we at that point in the agenda where we could do that?
Sure, you can do that anytime. Why not, should somebody fix something new? Discouraged, but it's come out, so.
Right, but my concern is, not whether it's discouraged, whether it's legal.
It is legal.
That's probably, so.
Should we make a motion to extend the, the bid before we then?
No, we can make a motion to put a bid out to entertain a new building inspector for the city to be put on retainer or as a on-call basis.
So your first motion would be to amend the agenda to add item G.
Right.
Building inspector.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include a new building inspector, put a bid out for a new building inspector. Is that correct?
That's not good. I'll say it.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Record show unanimous. So for, back to old business, the Marble Office Building Roof Bids and Estimates, do we want to approve that a bid be called for to not be exclusive to the repair of the roof, but to accept estimates on the rehabilitation of the building?
About renovation of the whole place and the breakdown of each thing that they've got to do, you know, that way, that way we can compare whatever they say that needs to be done to, you know. If they recommend that room to be fixed, that one section, maybe we might want to go with that and keep the roof on there, but I think it'd be cheaper to take it off, but we'll have to see what they say.
Who's gonna recommend, the inspector or the contractor?
The inspector will expect to give us an idea of what we should expect on the bids.
Right, so we can't put it out to bid until after the inspector looks at it.
That, that isn't necessarily true. The individuals could bid on it based on what they think needs to be done, but when we get a building inspector, and that shouldn't be too long, because there are quite few building inspectors.
I haven't seen that one.
Out of work, yeah. So I don't think that that is so time-sensitive. I don't think they'll be that far out of sync. That's my opinion, but it's up to the City Council to vote us, well, I don't have a a motion, so as soon as I hear a motion.
Well, I'd make a motion, everything that we take bids on, on the whole job to be done, but broke down in sections, in segments, that way we can renovate the building. That way we decide if we can afford to go all the way or not.
And bring it back to at the next council.
Yeah.
Do we want to specify the roof first in the bid, in this motion or not? Is that necessary, or just we have a bid process?
That's a motion.
I'll say it.
Second, all in favor? Record show unanimous again. All right. At this point, it's item number 10 on the agenda, new business, and item A is council appointments. Council appointments are for the areas of responsibility. The City Council has the authority to assign areas of responsibility to the individuals on the City Council. There, they have oversight and supervisory authority with the city employees, city resources, and ultimately, city funds. So now, our, our list has the first area of responsibility, and at this, would you like to do the council appointments, which is at the top of the sheet? Do we need to do the individual names to have it voted on, or can I do the whole block?
You do the whole block, if somebody makes a motion for the whole, for the whole block to be approved.
Okay. I'll read the block out to everyone in case you don't have the sheet, then the City Council can vote to accept those appointments or to take Brandy's name off the list.
I'll read you.
All right. The council appointments, Brandy Edwards is the city clerk, Heath Mitchell, chief of police, Joey Smith, maintenance, Catherine Poe, court clerk, Jeff Russbridge, city attorney, Richard Jones, municipal judge, Jeff Russbridge, city solicitor, David Leister, zoning administrator. Are you taking a motion to strike any or accept all?
I'd make a motion to accept all.
One, two, make a motion, second. How about you? All right, all in favor? All right. Let's record show that was unanimous.
We'll get used to this, I'm your man.
I'm not used to it. I'm getting on my day, I don't know either. I don't judge. All right, and the areas of responsibility for the City Council, the first area of responsibility is personnel and administrative. Now, before I proceed, and I apologize again for dragging this out even further, since you weren't sworn in and we didn't have a true work session, these appointments can be changed at any time on the City Council. You can call a special session, or at a next council meeting, you can change any of these points. So I can read these in as listed, or we can change any name or names on here or areas of responsibility at this point, if you'd like to open that up for discussion. And my hope would be that discussion could be held to a minimum, because it is getting later, and we don't want to keep these nice people up there. So if I like to read this over, and if I can get a nod or a head count as to who wants to proceed with it as is, then we can.
We'll, we'll do that, change it later.
And that can be done then, now. And that can be done then now, but you'll have to have, um, you'll have to get together to discuss that. And I would recommend, um, possibly establishing a work session, which is not a council, but just a, a general work session, which can be called at any, at any time. We're all available, preferably.
And I suggest we call that leaves to each thing and said they accept the conversation first.
All right, for personnel and administrative, uh, the individual responsible for that is Jonathan Bishop. Do you accept that?
Sure.
Okay, and public safety is Larry Sellers and he is currently not present. Over finance is Martha Tipton. Do you still accept that?
Yes.
Okay, planning and zoning is Jackie Jarrett.
I'll take it.
Roads and street is David Leister. I gratefully accept that. Parks and recreation is Dwayne Chronic. And ordinance violations is the entire city council. With that stated, um, do we have any areas of responsibility that we want to modify? And if not, then we would of course default to a, a work session or a council.
What is there, is there something wrote down that each one of these pretty well would cover, each one of these positions? If they would cover, is there something wrote down already that they would cover or is it just a? Anything that has to do with planning its own and I, I have to?
I, I'm sorry, yeah, there, there are no specs, so to speak, about it. The thing is if, uh, public safety for Larry Sellers is, uh, Heath, uh, fire department. That, basically that for us. Now, yeah, so that would be that.
Another thing, can you, can, uh, can anybody that's on this, they're not going to be able to be present. Can they appoint or get one of the other council members to fill in for them if they have to?
I would assume, and I'll go back over here to Jeff for a second. When this was under the umbrella of the mayor, he had the authority to delegate his responsibilities to other individuals based on their qualification and experience. Is that the way it is also worded or for these areas of responsibility?
The areas of responsibility, I mean, they're up to you to decide that what had been done to some degree in the past was the idea of committees handling all of these. The difficulty with that is for a committee, even if it's two council members. If that committee got together, if those two council members decided to talk, they've got another file of paper. That's difficult and don't know whether that's traditionally been done. So we had talked about instead of doing it that way, that if you have council members' individual areas of responsibility, there, those people are making decisions per se anyway. That makes it easier. So you can do with it what you want to.
So it had evolved from being misrepresented as committees when in fact it was, uh, one individual making the decisions. And so it evolved from this concept of more than one person to just one individual having that, so. So.
I'll make, make the motion to accept it.
As is.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
You're good for two, aren't you?
A second motion.
All in favor? Let the record show that unanimous. And for me, I'd like to personally thank all of you for allowing me the privilege of being responsible for, um, roads and streets. Thank you. All right. The next, uh, business, new business is sanitation, late fees for December. Because of the issues we had with this building, um, some citizens weren't able to make their payments because when they came up, no one was here and for whatever reason, because of workers, they might have chosen not to put their payments in the lockbox out here. It would, it would be an act of kindness if the city council would consider waiving those late fees for December. And if someone would make that motion, I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion that we waive the late fees for December.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Let the record show that we have a kind and caring city council. The next two items are items that I asked be placed on new business. And I've already discussed my perception of the personnel committee and the role it plays in city government now. And we would need two city council members and, and not, and in afterthought, it doesn't have to be exclusively the city council members. If, I think for the size of Nelson, we don't need committees bigger than three people. And I think that if the city council were to choose two of its members, I would like to suggest that a third member, uh, be a top ranking employee, which in my opinion would be, uh, Brandy, unless the action involves Brandy, at which time I would recommend that Heath be involved in it. And that way you have three votes and you don't have to face the scenario, two people disagree. And it doesn't make it exclusive to the city council. It actually brings an employee into the mix of personnel and I think that's good management. Do you have any objections?
I don't have an objection, I just have a question.
Oh, what question?
When we have committees that we have to notify the paper with. So we have to notify the paper when we start to meet for a committee.
That is right, yes.
So when it's personnel.
You may be notifying the paper and Jeff may show up and you may go immediately into executive session and come out and send Jeff home.
Okay, so the personnel committee can go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all it says.
If that committee means notification has to be made.
Right.
Sorry, Jeff.
Discuss personnel issues involved. Sounds good, thank you.
I just.
She's smaller.
Sometimes.
That's not good there.
That's why she makes big moves.
Ooh. Now it's over. So, uh, that's, that's my opinion on how a personnel committee should be formed. And that is the, the active topic, so, um, is there any motions for the establishment of a personnel committee and any members for it?
If we've got to have one, then I, I'll make the motion everything, a personnel committee.
That it consists of?
Consists of two council people and, uh, Brandy.
He did this on you?
Well, we have to have two council members volunteer for that. Now.
Jonathan's over personnel.
Yeah, because Jonathan is automatically volunteered, now we only need one. And you're welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So anybody want to volunteer? Do I hear a yes?
It don't matter.
Don't like to be on it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, your motion is for those three people.
Uh, and Heath, if it involves.
And Heath has a backup should it involve Brandy. So, that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Seconded, someone, please?
A second motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Let the record show that unanimous.
What was the question before we started?
All right, um, the next topic of discussion is for the possibility or interest of the city council in forming a finance committee. A finance could, committee, while all financial information is readily available from city hall, Brandy. My experience personally, and I'm not speaking for anyone else, is that sometimes when I look at the financial information, I'm not exactly clear on what I'm reading. If a finance committee is deemed useful to the city council members, uh, then it can be voted on to, uh, solicit membership for that council with, committee, which would be automatically chaired by Martha because she's over finance. And that, the purpose of the finance committee would have to be defined by the vote to establish it. Now, if this is something that you'd like to table until next meeting so that you have time to consider what use it may have in the city, that is an option, that motion can be made so that you can further define for yourselves if Nelson being as small as it is, if we need that. If you think that you can view the financial data that Brandy's giving us and understand it better, then, you know, we don't need one at all. But I wanted to put it out there in case there was a perception that it would be helpful initially. Because even if it's established, you don't have to use it all the time. If you establish a specific goal for it to, in my terms, dumb it down so that a non-accountant can understand it better. I mean, that would be a purpose for getting it, but if you don't think we need it, just say we don't need it. And if you want to table it, you can table it till next month.
I suggest table.
Can I say something?
Can I say something?
During our work session, can we have a, a class for dummies?
That would be fantastic.
And I can explain how to read the.
And when you, when you send the dummy, uh, information out to everybody, uh, you know, include it in your email so that, you know, interested parties can come and listen to the work session so they can understand our budget. Because the ultimate goal is to make sure everybody knows what we're spending and what we're doing with the money. And, you know, that, that, at least that's what I think it is. And right now, you know, we've had other things to deal with and we haven't really focused on that, so. So.
Because there's different ways to print reports that can.
All right, so you've made a motion to table it till next one?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor? Let the record show that's unanimous. All right, and here is item 10E, which was the school street closing, uh, for not closing item. And, um, during the public hearing, the citizen turnout was, um, incredible, it was appreciated. And I think it's what everyone wanted. They wanted to hear what the people of Nelson had to say and, uh, and that was, that was heard loud and clear. So for item 10E, we need a, a motion made on the closing of school street. I believe the information has been provided. If someone would like to make that motion now, it would be appreciated.
I make a motion that school street remain open and that any safety or space issue be resolved by relocating the playground equipment as required.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Let the record show that was unanimous. All right, the next item is item F for city signatories. We have two individuals who can be available during business hours to sign any checks required for city business.
At the bank.
At the bank.
At the bank.
Physically at the bank.
Yeah.
So, uh, at this time, the opportunity is there for Martha.
Martha's already took her stuff to the bank, I'm sorry.
So she is a signatory?
She's gonna be as soon as we get the third person to sign, to sign them because we already have, we have to have two people to sign anything. The cashier CD has to have the minutes and two people. To sign a check for one penny has to have two signatures on it.
And who would be this second?
Jackie Jarrett.
All right. So I'd like to have a motion.
Make a motion for Jackie Jarrett, Martha Tipton on the bank signature card. And Brandy.
All right.
I'll say that.
All in favor? That's fantastic. So that's done. 10G is the bid for new building inspector. I think we need to have a motion to request, not necessarily the word bid, but we need to entertain applications for a city building inspector. And you have this next one?
I ha- uh, I actually have a couple of, um, resumes.
Okay.
So if we want to leave it open for a week or, I mean, if we run it in the paper, every, everybody's going to come and say, hey, I can get certified. I think that we just need to say, hey, you know, I already have a few that actually got laid off from other counties and cities.
Okay.
When they're building job, um, but it's, who's going to hire them? Is the council going to hire them? Is the personnel committee going to hire them?
Well, and again, with the.
Well, we have to be the county's holding.
Yeah.
Because they're being, we're waiting a whole other month, so.
Well, that wouldn't.
That wouldn't take a lot of time. We could have a special session. That could be thirty minutes to do that.
We'll try to get it done.
And as far as the interview process is.
But it needs to be on a retainer. Like this one, he's not paid unless he comes.
I think that's the way we need it here.
I think we have one building, a swanpool permit open and that's it.
Yeah, I, I think it should be on a has-needed basis. Uh, you know, again, just my opinion. I think we should entertain qualified applicants, giving preference to Nelson citizens where appropriate. Uh, and as far as the city council reviewing that, uh, I don't know that we, we're not excluding anyone. But if it comes down to two highly qualified candidates that can apply for that opportunity, I, I would sincerely hope we would take care of our own in that area. Is that within legal?
Sure.
Okay, good. So, we make a motion to, um, accept applications. And that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be run into paper. It just means that we're, would accept applications for, uh, a building inspector on a has-needed basis.
A certified building inspector.
Certified, I like that one. All right, so somebody?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and second?
That's you.
All in favor? All right, let the record show that was unanimous. All right, well, I, before public appearances start, I'd like to apologize for this meeting running so long. But since it is our first as a, with a new city council, I felt that we needed to explain a little more and go into it so that not just the citizens here at the meeting, but also the city, new city council members have a better understanding. Going forward, it, it's eight twenty-five now. I, I'd like to be out of these meetings at seven twenty-five. But, you know, whatever it takes. So for public appearances, if anyone would like to speak, um, now's the time. Please take the podium. Take the podium?
Okay.
I couldn't see. James was blocking.
My name is Sue Harper and my question is, uh, Nelson has a lot of old trees and sometimes when the storm comes up and it's, city hall's not open, it's on the weekend or at night. It has been my habit to call Johnny Hopkins and he'd take care of the matter. Is there going to be someone on the council, one person, to sort of cover that job that he had? That if something happens, uh, that city hall needs to know about and it's not during regular hours, is there going to be one person like he was? And call you, okay?
And that'll be roads and streets. I, I hope to reach out to Pickens County and see what opportunities they have for us to work with them. And so, you know, I'll be looking into, to different things to help us out.
Well, what I'm, uh, concerned with just the, when something happens right then.
Right.
There's a roadblock and it's been made, you can call him.
Yes.
He, uh, called Joey or whatever and it was took care of. So that's what you'll be doing.
I'll just be making the call to Joey instead of Johnny.
Okay. Thank you.
And when Joey can't move. And when Joey can't move, I'll make arrangements to have somebody else do it.
Okay. Any, if anything else comes up?
I'll call you. Public appearance? I didn't expect you to.
Oh, I guess a couple more minutes. First item I have is, last year, the council, I guess, directed me that I became state certified, that I would be the land disturbance inspector for the city, which I have since become certified. I just wanted, for council members that are not familiar with what I'm talking about, is the city has the authority to issue permits for people to do grading, is what it announced, moving dirt on an acre or more. Or if soil is leaving a lot, even fits a quarter acre, the city has the authority to take action. And I don't know that you need to, like you did up here, appoint people to positions to, to either appoint me or not, appoint me as the inspector. I just wanted to ask you that. And I also wanted to ask Jeff, if I am appointed as the inspector, am I covered by the same liability coverage as the city if I'm sued?
I would expect that you would be. If you were a representative of the city, or form another city council in that regard, you should be. To be safe, we should probably confirm that with the insurance carrier.
Okay. So, I'll let you determine if you need to take a vote to appoint me to that. The, another question I have about the building inspector. Under which of these supervision areas would he come?
I would assume under, well, roads and streets. But who had, that was always Johnny's area also, right?
Yeah, more, I mean, that's been more personnel issues here.
There's, really that encompasses a little more than just coming out and looking at buildings for permits in progress. Somebody has to pretty much on a continuous basis observe the city to see if any illegal building is going on.
So, you can call Sue, and she'll call me.
That's an illegal building, though. The last item I have, under, under the situation of appointing area supervisors. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, that wouldn't require a special session if they wanted to appoint somebody as an interim or the actual supervisor over the police department. Because the way it is now, he has no supervisor, which is not a good idea.
Well, that would be a public safety, wouldn't it?
That would be public safety, and that's Larry Sellers at this point. So, he has a supervisor along, yeah, along with the fact that he reports to the city council as a whole. So, he has adequate supervision.
And Jonathan's over personnel.
And Jonathan is over personnel and administration, which encompasses that also. Are you talking about someone to give him weekly tasks to perform?
The role of the supervisor of an employee.
Okay.
Which, what you just described is, is a contradiction over the way you. I don't want to belabor the point, I'm just, what I'm saying is, having been involved with the city of Florence, I know how important it is to have their immediate supervisor working with them.
I appreciate you wrapping up, and I can assure you that all areas in the city of Nelson any other public appearances, anyone like to say anything?
Joe's been told three times to do this.
All right, if there are no other.
Well, they got my hand up, and you never looked this way.
Hi, Paul, guys. Would you like to speak now, sir?
Well, I'd like to actually commend. I'd like to actually commend the former candidate. Congratulate him, commend him. I think this was a wonderful city council. Maybe I think you ought to have more of this. I would recommend those to start at six thirty.
Well, we start at six thirty. We're supposed to have a work session. We couldn't have that this time.
Because you didn't have enough people?
Because we didn't have them sworn in, so you couldn't just. And that's why I explained earlier why we called on them so long. But, you know, going forward, we'll meet at six thirty. We'll talk more this afternoon. So, these can be shorter meetings. Some people, like they want to hold an hour. How long?
The holiday, not the subject.
Yes. Any other public appearances? Sorry, I can't see.
I also would like to congratulate all the new council members. And I second Mr. Magnif saying that it was a very, very, very nice council meeting today. And congratulations to all.
Any other comments? If there are no comments pending, then I might just all turn the motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Let the record show that that's unanimous. Thank you.